...mother is, I think, over.
Call me need order. Oh, please rise. And I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that has been before us this evening. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To contribute to public for what we stand. One nation, under God.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Alderman Vasso.
Here.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman Kromarski.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Mayor's City Clerk, Treasurer and Attorney.
All right, there's no special presentations that I'm aware of tonight. Under the consent calendar, I've got two items. The approval of the city council meeting from November seventeenth, twenty twenty, along with the approval of the payroll and the voucher list for the period ending November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty. And entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So move second.
Alderman Kromarski, Second Amendment Violet, discussion. Roll call.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
All right, no sealed bids. Under my report, a couple of things. We are entering the holiday season. I'm not sure what kind of holiday season it's going to be. It is what we make of it, I guess, is we have to look at it. And I think that's, at least now you're starting to see some of the trees being, or houses being lit up and things like that, which is a nice sign, and that things are trying to get back to some normality, if that's at all possible. Last Friday, we had a limited tree lighting ceremony over at the municipal parking lot where we lit the tree. Santa Claus was there. Some of, we had some kids and individuals that came up and gave their wish list. We did it very safely. No one sitting on the lap, sitting in chairs. The Santa Claus, he had a little mailbox there for his letters from Santa's kids, you know, to what they wanted, and put in the drawers. We gave him a little bit, a little candy and some other things, and it went off pretty well. But it, again, was not like we used to do at Lake Catherine where we had hundreds of people. But again, hopefully next year, things will be back in light, and we'll be doing that. On another note, this is Giving Tuesday. For, you still have some time left today if you'd like to give to some charity of your choice. Many of the, and you can actually make this giving season, it doesn't have to end today. But the fact is, a lot of the not-for-profits in the area are suffering because they have not been able to have their traditional fundraisers, per se, during, throughout this year because of the COVID crisis. And so if you could do something, dig in your pockets and help out some of those not-for-profits, I'm sure they would be appreciated. This afternoon, I had my fourth meeting. I think I've mentioned to you in the past that I have been asked to be on the task force for the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus on the COVID-19 crisis. And today, we, among other things, one of the highlights, I guess, if that's the way to say it, was we had the director of the quarantine, I'm sorry, the vaccination program for the city of Chicago kind of gave us a rundown on how the city is planning on handling the quarantine, the vaccination, once they start coming into play, which should be in the next couple of weeks. They were approved, and we're looking at, they're thinking within the next two weeks, the caregivers and also long-term care facilities will be, will be impacted and make, with COVID, with vaccines being available to them. Thursday morning at nine o'clock, I have a conference call with the governors, the governor and his staff, as far as how the state is going to handle it. So we'll get some more insight as far as what they, you know, what's going on with them. But I guess that's the light at the end of the tunnel, hopefully, that, you know, there'll be some improvement in those numbers that we see every day on TV. And again, you know, the vaccine is one way to do it. The other way to do it is to, you know, wear your mask, you know, keep your distance and wash your hands. Those are the things we keep harping on, but I think we, you know, you've seen the signs around town. We're trying to reinforce to people that this is a, everybody's got to buy into this. I mean, one of the easiest ways to not, to stem this spread of COVID is to wear masks. And so please do that, and please be safe out there. And that's all I have. City clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We've got two items regarding the schedule for next year. First is that we need a motion to pass a resolution setting forth the schedule for the city council meetings for 2021.
So move.
Move by Alderman Kromarski, Second Amendment Violet, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Propose? Motion carries?
Aye.
Second, a motion to pass a resolution setting the city's schedule for city committee meetings for 2021.
So would you like to make the motion?
So.
By Alderman Clifford, Second by Alderman Kromarski. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
Thank you, that's the end of my report.
All right, city treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report tonight.
All right, city attorney?
Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right, communication, you want, Alderman Kromarski?
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Sure.
December seventh is the anniversary of Pearl Harbor. The Japanese military launched a surprise attack on the U.S. naval base at Pearl Harbor. The attack killed over twenty-four hundred service members and wounded over twelve hundred more. Never forget this important date in history, so parents and grandparents, teach your children, because they may not be being taught this in school. Also, I would like to commend Public Works. Our Public Works department decorated the municipal parking lot and the trees in the Harlem Avenue Business District. It's absolutely beautiful.
They did a great job.
So they did an outstanding job, and if you're out going to a restaurant for carryout or pickups, please stop and see that. It's a beautiful sight at night.
Yes, thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
They did a fantastic job. Yes, Alderman McGovern?
Mr. Mayor, I got in contact with Toys for Tots over this last week, and we've established two Toys for Tots boxes in the lobby at the rec center. Now, if you're going to, like, they have people come in and donate some toys for others, and it'll be open during normal business hours. The rec center closes about nine PM at night, and on Saturday and Sunday, it's open from seven to seven. And if you're going to donate gifts, please unwrap it. And like I said, the boxes, the boxes are right in the lobby at the rec center, okay? So, and everybody that would donate, I thank you very much.
Great. And that goes hand in hand with what I had said earlier about this is a time to give, and.
Ended up being perfect timing for it, yes, sir.
And as we talked the other night, the tree lighting, the motorcycle down Western Avenue didn't happen this year and all that. All those toys used to go to Toys R. Tots, so they may be hurting as far as getting donations. So I commend you for your efforts in doing that, Alderman. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a couple of items. First, there is a article in the paper, South Town is Fair or Fake, at Mr. Philip Torreese.
Oh, yeah.
He passed away, this is a, basically a charter member, Payless Heights, it said he moved here in nineteen fifty-nine. He had the pleasure, and I know Bob probably can second this, for many of those fifty-five years, he was on the, an usher at St. Alexander's, and you would see him every, you know, Sunday or Saturday at Mass, and seemed to always have a smile, and after he retired, he joined every single organization that we talk about. So I think the family, you know, was lucky to have him for ninety-one years, I believe. So that was one thing, and he'll be missed. And then, secondly, I just want to tell everyone, thanks for, while I was away recovering, for some cards and other things. I really appreciate it. It really lightens up your spirits and gets you through some tough times. Thank you very much.
To kind of piggyback on what you said about Phil, Doris passed away earlier this year, and they were the backbone. Of our Payless seniors for years. I mean, they were, they ran every senior function and were at every senior function I was ever at, and just super people, and they will definitely be missed, and I, so I, again, I commend you on your.
If I can triple, piggyback that, please. He was also one of the honor guards.
Right.
Every one of our memorial day, Veterans Day, functions we had out here at City Hall.
He was one of the rifle guys.
He was one of, one of the guys who gave out the twenty-one guns to the, so he will be missed, yes.
Yeah.
I was just going to say what Jerry did. He was a longtime member of the local VFW, Korean War veteran, and attended many and supported many of the veterans, so programs and organizations within Payless Heights. Also, on that, we still on the communication room.
Yes.
Just a quick announcement or thank you. I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the Payless Lions, to all the people that came out and helped us out on last Saturday, the tree light at eight o'clock in the morning. The semi came in with the five hundred-plus trees, all the students, Waldermen were there, all the policemen were there, all the gorge people were there. So to each and every one of them, thank you. The lab was all set up, and the tree sales are going rather well, so if you do, hurry up when you're last.
Yeah, and by the way, today it looks like pretty sparse pickings, which is good.
Yeah, we hope to be done by the, hopefully, maybe, the way it's going, fifteenth of December.
Great, very good.
But thank you to everybody that showed up that day.
Good, good, good group. All right, any other communications, anyone have? All right, citizens, anybody sending anything in?
Not, not this evening.
Not this evening, okay. Finance committee, Alderman McGrogan.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we have two items, and then I'll have a comment at the end of that. Number nine is a motion to adopt an ordinance providing for the tax levy of the city of Payless Heights for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty. And as Jan pointed out in the earlier meeting, the total amount, which is basically a high bar, nine million, nine hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and no cents.
Move by Alderman McGrogan, Second by Alderman Violet, discussion. Roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Okay, number ten, this is also, every year, we have to make the motion and approve a resolution for proportionally reducing all levies except the city corporate, the library corporate, and the police pension.
Second, move by Alderman McGrogan, Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion. Roll call?
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The other thing is, and I think we could probably talk about this later, but the city is, the city treasurer, Jim, mentioned it's pretty good shape financially despite the COVID. And I was just wondering if there's been any thought given to maybe reinstituting the program that you developed with Jeff's program and yours, and the, to help the businesses. As you mentioned, I mean, the governor is saying that might get tough again to, you know, maybe we come up with some other kind of a, you know, shop pay lists during Christmas. We only have a month. And so, I mean, we can't spend a lot of time negotiating it because it'll be New Year's before we get to it. So I just thought, maybe the other aldermen might have comments, that maybe we should try to just bring that program back or do something similar.
We can't, we're trying to do something. If you have any input, why don't you give it to me, and then we'll get it. Probably the easiest way to do it, that way, so, okay?
Okay, that's the end of my report.
Public safety, Alderman McGovern?
Public safety, yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion, okay, to adopt an ordinance updating City Code seventy-three dot zero zero seven. And that was the one we passed last week, transferring the nuisance abatement from the police department to the building commission.
All right, move by Alderman McGovern, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGrogan, discussion. Roll call?
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
That's, that's all I have, thank you.
Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Vasso?
Oh, yes, Mayor. Please excuse me if I'm repeating some of the things I already said, but I would like to congratulate and thank Public Works for the tree lighting on Harlem Avenue. It looks terrific. Also, I'd like to remind everyone for the final time that Adam has also been able to procure two extra weeks of yard waste pickup, though that will be this week and next week. So that constitutes all materials that are placed in paper bags at the curbside along with our regular waste. I'd also like to congratulate Kendall Coyne, our resident gold medal-winning women's hockey player, for her recent appointment with the Chicago Blackhawks as coordinator and coach. Congratulations to her. She keeps racking up these achievements, a fantastic job, and everyone should be extremely proud of her. And that would be the end of my report, Mayor.
Thanks, Alderman Vasso. Planning, zoning, Alderman Clifford?
Give me one second, calculating. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to direct the city attorney draft an ordinance to allow for a covered, open front, open-air front porch addition, and front yard set that to twenty-five feet, point six-nine feet, and lieu other required thirty feet, and required residential property commonly known as one twenty-five fifteen South Herald, contained within stated PIN number. This is a, the variance is four, he wrote it like this, but it can be confusing to people. It's four point three-one feet.
Okay. Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries?
The petitioner asked for a motion to waive the rules for expedience of construction to try to get it in.
A second.
Before the store council make a, make a motion to waive the rules.
Move by Alderman Clifford, Second by Alderman McGrogan, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
Move to adopt.
Move by Alderman Clifford, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman McGovern. Roll call?
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
All right.
Yep.
Number fifteen, motion to direct the Economic and Community Development Department to initiate the vacation of the remaining unused portions of Sixty-Eighth Avenue row between one hundred and twenty-fifth and one hundred and twenty-seven, including working with the city attorney and engineer so their lack of conformity is maintained to the best of the city's ability, as well as scheduling necessary hearings to complete such vacation at no cost to the adjacent property owners.
Move by Alderman Clifford, Second by Alderman Violet, discussion?
I think everyone may have gotten a copy of this. The properties in question are in yellow, in the blue, the blue is the vacations on Sixty-Eighth between the two.
Okay. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Motion carries? Okay.
Uh, that's the end of my report, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Alderman Key, Recreation?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to announce that on November ninth, the Recreation Department is temporarily adjusting the in-person registration hours. You can always go online anytime and register for a workout time or using the track, but just temporarily, Monday through Friday, nine o'clock till five o'clock, and Saturday, seven o'clock in the morning until one PM. And that's just to register to use the facilities. And that concludes my report.
All right, closing construction, Alderman Kromarski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report this evening.
Licensed permits and franchises, Alderman Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, no report.
All right, thank you. Water and sewer, Alderman Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve payment for, for an emergency repair to twenty feet of sanitary sewer to suburban general construction in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-one dollars and sixty-five cents.
Move by Alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kromarski, discussion. Roll call?
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
And finally, I move to approve a partial payment for the manhole rehabilitation project to Kim Construction in the amount of one hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
Move by Alderman Violet, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kromarski, discussion. Roll call?
Alderman Vasso.
Hi.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Hi.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Hi.
Alderman Kromarski.
Yes.
Motion carries?
Seems like a lot of activity on Hundred Twenty-Seventh Street lately, huh?
Yes. Very busy. Back to the rec center.
Right, from, up and down the street there. Okay, so you may want to stay up Hundred Twenty-Seventh Street next couple of weeks or so.
It's the only way I can get to the gym. No, I gotta go.
All right, special committees, Alderman Key, business and account development?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to add my own thanks to the city, yourself, for the tree lighting that we did on last Friday in coordination with the Payless Area Chamber of Commerce. Like you said, it's normally, it's always a day after Thanksgiving normally at Lake Catherine. We wanted to keep something going, though. It was important to do that because we've had to cancel almost everything else we've done in the city this year, and, you know, this, this coming weekend, we would have normally had Chris Kringle that we had to cancel. So I was thankful that the Chamber of Commerce did that. We cannot do those things without the Public Works, and they did a lot of work setting up, bringing a wagon over from Lake Catherine, doing a lot of the electrical work, especially Patrick helped us out a lot, taking this stuff down. So I just want to say thank you to Public Works as usual.
And thank you too, by the way.
Oh.
I was just going to say, it was really a nice, nice thing to see Santa Claus sitting there nice and comfortable.
Right, right.
And taking care of everything. It was really generous of him to show up for a couple of hours.
He did nice job coming in for North Pole that night.
And, you know, we've, we've been appealing, I'm sure all of us are appealing to the community about shopping local, eating local, and those kind of things. I know in my house, when it comes to Christmas, my wife and I kind of look at each other and say, you know, what do we need? What do we want to buy each other? We're always looking for those kind of things. And I was thinking that this year it might be a good idea to, you know, if you go to Lake Catherine, you can dedicate a tree or dedicate a bench, do those kind of things. Just be, maybe just take the money you would spend on each other and be generous with the service organizations in town, the Toys R. Tots thing. You could always reach out to veterans organizations. They're always in need of something, and it's so well-deserved, so just keep that in mind. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Cable TV, Alderman McGrogan?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, we weren't able to present a live broadcast of the Christmas tree lighting because a couple of days before, we had an interview in here, and the next day, the person was hospitalized with COVID-19. Our staff had to be quarantined and retested and everything else. They all came back negative. Our staff is negative. But for the time being, we're going to have to suspend interviews. So outside, outside of that, they are ready for live broadcasts, and this is going to be an extremely great year we're coming up. As a matter of fact, this ended up for, as far as Channel Four goes for this year, it's been an amazing year for them. They picked up two new volunteers, a few other things, so everything else worked out well. And that's all I really have to add.
Right, thank you.
Except them guys really worked their buns off.
Yeah, definitely. All right, any old business?
I have one for old business, Mr. Mayor. We've been talking about COVID-19 and everything else, and I am really going to ask tonight if we can look at another referendum for gambling in Payless Heights. Every one of our cities, villages around us, with the exception of Payless Park, allows gambling. The state allows gambling, the county allows gambling. Our restaurants are down to skeleton crews. And I mean, that's really, in one restaurant that I knew of, the other night, they had four employees. And these are all locally-owned businesses. They're not, we're not talking corporations or anything like that. We don't have, we, we don't have, you know, any of the big downtown corporations having their businesses out here. These people are on their own, individually, individuals, and we want to support them, we want to, and when the times are over, and that, over and done, I really feel that if we were to put the gambling back on the April sixth agenda, we could, or election, we could give them some financial support if they want it. That's the important part. To me, that's the important part. You can say yes, you can say no. We, as, we as a city are going to, I want to ask them to put it on the ballot, if it, if it comes up off of the ballot. If Restaurant X says we don't want it, well, that's fine. They don't need it. But if Restaurant Y wants it, let it be his choice. It's not, it shouldn't be our choice. So I'm asking, I am really asking tonight to see if we could possibly manage this to get on the April sixth.
Why don't we refer that to licensed permits and franchises and take it from there?
Sounds great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other business? No citizens here? Any new business?
Yeah, just one little announcement in relation to sort of what Alderman Key was saying about trying to support the local businesses and everything, you know, the best you can. You know, try to spend a few bucks here and there to get them through over this, get them over the hump here. But it's like you mentioned about helping out other people. If you can't find anybody here that you can do it, there's some good organizations that are local that need, need your help, one being Surtoma and the Group Homes, at the Crisis Center for Women and Children. It's run on a Tinley Park that Mr. Alderman Key mentioned about. They don't spend on themselves. Me and my wife and my kids, we don't do that no more. Haven't for years. We just buy it for their, you could call out there, they'll give you a family, put a list of things they need. You just buy that for them, and I'd be glad to take it out to the library out there for them. Any of those kind of organizations, and there's a lot of them. But if you do know somebody that's in need of maybe some food help, I'll try to help them out as far as the lines and the tree sales go, because that's what we do. So if you have a family that could use like a hundred dollars worth of, you know, thing, just let me know, and I'll see what I can do.
Great, thanks, Jack. That's a spirit.
Can I tack one more thing on there? I apologize.
No problem.
The Toys R. Us group also says that they, if, if you know somebody that might be in need, if you drop it off at the desk over, over at the rec center, the names of them, I'll pick them up. I'll pick them up, because I'm there almost every day anyway. So I'll, I'll pick them up and forward them over to Toys R. Tots for everybody.
Mayor, I have one other question. Is anybody aware of all the things that Jack and others have mentioned about different charities and the donations? I was wondering, does anyone know about, like, maybe organizations that are collecting jackets, clothes, you know, things of that nature? Usually you see them, like, the Bears used to do it, you know, they'd have a drop. And I think Our Lady of the Woods would do it, but, you know, nowadays, you can't go anywhere. So I was just, I've had a couple of people, and also even ourselves, I'd like to move some jackets and things that.
Vietnam. I got a whole wardrobe I can start. The Vietnam veterans have a box down in Crestwood, about eighty-three there.
Okay.
It's right on, as you pull in, there's a big seat container there. There's a couple of people usually there, and it's run, I believe, by the Vietnam Veterans, Veterans Association. They'll take. The one, one on the Menards parking lot up there? On one hundred and fifteen? Not by Menards, over by where the dollar store at Target is. Oh, okay.
That hasn't been there for a while, Jack.
Huh?
That hasn't been there for a while.
There's one, there is one in, in Menards on one hundred and fifty-ninth Street. They had a truck there the other day, so I'm just saying, you can check that out. There's places like that that are around, like Alderman McGrogan was referring to, if you're looking, and they'll take any kind of usable home goods and clothing and things of that nature.
Good. All right, any other new business? entertaining motion adjourned?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Repose.
Be safe, wear your mask.